Okay. Good evening, everybody. This is the July eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown. We are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and you're all invited to join in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Board. The Planning Department would like to recommend the following items be recessed because the applicants are not ready to be heard at this time. Under zoning petitions, number one, two thousand and twelve dash oh four Storybook Homes, Neshkanset. Number two, two thousand and twelve dash oh two Carlson Associates, Kings Park. Number three, two thousand and ten dash oh six KVC Holdings. Under waiver requests, number four, seven seven three Scholar States Comac. Number five, nine one one eight Glenhome Northern. Under two eighty A application, number six, Lizetta Street. And under final subdivision, number eleven thirty-six, Map of Open Meadow, Fort Zalando.
Is there anybody present who wishes to be heard on any of the matters that were just read regarding which the Planning Department is requesting a recess or adjournment? Seeing none, a motion, please?
I move that we recess matters one through seven as read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, so recessed.
The first item under new hearings and decisions is an extension of conditional final approval for Angelo's Platt and St. James. The applicant requests an extension of conditional final approval for the subdivision known as number eleven seventy-six, Map of Angelo's Platt. The final subdivision, number eleven seventy-six, Map of Angelo's Platt, received conditional final approval from the Planning Board on January tenth, two thousand and eighteen. This approval was valid for a period of one hundred and eighty days that expired on July ninth, two thousand and eighteen. The request for an extension was submitted on July sixth, two thousand and eighteen. The applicant states in their letter dated July fifth, two thousand and eighteen, that the maps have been executed by all parties, including the chairman, and have been at the Suffolk County Clerk's Office awaiting filing for over a month. The Planning Department has no objection to the request and recommends an extension of one hundred and eighty days. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Planning Board Resolution Number two thousand and eighteen, blank two thousand and eighteen, extension of conditional final approval for number eleven seventy-six, Map of Angelo's Platt. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the requests of Vincent J. Tramarko for an extension of conditional final approval for the subdivision number eleven seventy-six, Map of Angelo's Platt. Now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves the request to extend the conditional final approval for the subdivision known as number eleven seventy-six, Map of Angelo's Platt, for a period of one hundred and eighty days to expire on January fifth, two thousand and nineteen. And the applicant submitted the affidavit posting.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant. I ask the Board to follow the recommendation of the Planning Department and grant the extension. Thank you.
Anybody in the audience wishes to be heard on this particular matter? Any questions from any member of the Board on this particular matter? Seeing none, a motion to close the public hearing?
In the matter of number eleven seventy-six, Map of Angelo's Platt, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, hearing is closed. Now on the resolution.
In the matter of number eleven seventy-six, Map of Angelo's Platt, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, resolution so adopted.
The next item is an extension of a performance bond for a two eighty A application off of Jackson Street, Richmond Place. Is the applicant here for that? Okay. The applicant requests to retroactively extend the performance period of the performance bond for the two eighty A application on Richmond Place in Neshkanset. The applicant received conditional approval for this two eighty A application from the Planning Board on August seventeenth, two thousand and eleven. The approval is to construct a ten-foot to sixteen-foot wide driveway approximately one hundred and seventy-seven feet long on the paper street known as Richmond Place off Jackson Street in Neshkanset. The performance period for the performance bond expired on November seventeenth, two thousand and eleven. The applicant is requesting to retroactively extend the performance period of the performance bond for a period of six years to expire November seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, in order to allow more time to construct driveway and house. The engineering and highway departments have no objection to the request. The traffic safety department has no comment. The Planning Department has no objection to the request. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Planning Board Resolution Number blank two thousand and eighteen, extension of performance period of performance bond for a two eighty A application on Richmond Place, Suffolk County Tax Map Number eight hundred one sixty-three three twenty-three. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the request of Annalisa Raimudo to retroactively extend the performance period of the performance bond for the two eighty A application on Richmond Place, Suffolk County Tax Map Number eight hundred one sixty-three three twenty-three, for a period of six years. Now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves a retroactive extension of the performance period of the performance bond for the two eighty A application on Richmond Place, Suffolk County Tax Map Number eight hundred one sixty-three three twenty-three, for a period of six years to expire November seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen.
If the app, we can file the affidavit of posting. Anybody here on behalf of the applicant? Please step up, sir. If you have the affidavit of posting with you, please hand it to Mr. Colato, and then step up to the microphone, give your name, your address, and your relationship to the applicant, unless you are the applicant.
Good evening. My name is Nicholas Romiro. I'm the husband of the applicant.
And your address for the record, please, sir?
Excuse me?
Your address for the record, everything's on the record.
The address is seven Jackson Street, Neshkanset.
Your address?
That's the address of the house.
I need your address for the record.
I'm actually living with my in-laws.
Okay, but we need your-
Okay, twenty-nine Richard Road, Selden, New York, one one seventy-four.
Thank you. Everything's just on record here, so we have to have a record. Is the affidavit of posting in order?
Yes.
Okay, sir, have you heard the recommendation and the analysis just given by the Planning Department?
Yes.
And you're in agreement with it?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody in the audience who wish to be heard in this particular matter? Any questions from the mem, any member of the Board on this particular matter?
Yes, I note the performance bond expired close to seven years ago. There's sufficient funding to cover the expenses.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. That being said, question answered, question answered. A motion, please, to close the public hearing on this matter?
In the matter of two eighty A application, Richmond Place, Suffolk County Tax Map eight hundred one sixty-three three twenty-three, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, hearing is closed. Now on the resolution.
In the matter of two eighty A application, Richmond Place, Suffolk County Tax Map Number eight hundred one sixty-three three twenty-three, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, resolution is adopted. Good evening, sir. Thank you.
The next item is a telecommunications application, number ten TC two thousand and eighteen oh one. This application was last heard at the May twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen Planning Board meeting. At that meeting, the Planning Department read into the record a report outlining the application, which is enclosed. In addition to the Planning Department's report, the applicant provided the board with additional information and called out various experts to speak on behalf of the application. At the conclusion of the testimony, the board closed the public hearing and recessed the matter to the June thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting, and subsequently the July eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting, in order to allow the Department of Environment and Waterways to complete the secret review process. Since the June thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen Planning Board meeting, the Department of Environment and Waterways has completed the secret review process and recommends a secret and negative declaration. The Department of Environment and Waterways offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Planning Board Resolution Number blank two thousand and eighteen, recommended secret declaration for special exception petition TC two thousand and eighteen dash one. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the secret recommendation from the Department of Environment and Waterways for TC two thousand and eighteen dash oh one, New York S M S A Limited Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless, now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown hereby issue a secret and negative declaration, determination of nonsignificance, and E I S is not necessary in the matter of special exception petition two thousand and eighteen dash oh one, Verizon at four three seven North Country Road, St. James, Tier Two, by New York S M S A Limited Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless for the following reasons. A, the proposal does not appear to significantly threaten any unique or highly valuable environmental or cultural resources as identified in or regulated by the Environmental Conservation Law of the State of New York or Smithtown Town Code. B, the proposal does not involve the physical modification of or construction upon lands which suffer from any severe environmental development constraints, no high groundwater, no poor soil properties, and no imaginable slopes. C, the proposal appears to be compatible with neighboring land uses, placement of antennas inside a replacement cupola, concealing the antennas from view and thereby minimizing visual impacts. Indeed, the proposal appears to be consistent with the location, site, design, and safety requirements of chapter two forty-two of the Smithtown Town Code. The Planning Department recommends approval and offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Planning Board Resolution Number blank two thousand and eighteen, Tier Two Personal Wireless Service Facility Approval for special exception petition TC two thousand and eighteen dash oh one. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the special exception application of New York S M S A Limited Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless for a personal wireless service facility, now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves the special exception application TC two thousand and eighteen dash oh one, New York S M S A Limited Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless for a personal wireless service facility pursuant to chapters two forty-two and three twenty-two dash thirty point three of the Smithtown Town Code, subject to the following conditions. One, appropriate signant shall be installed on all access points to the roof that provides the following information. A, notification, a telecommunications facility which produces radio frequency emissions is present on the roof. B, identification of the radio frequency emission range. C, provision of contact information to arrange for shut-off of the facility in the event that is necessary for any person or people to be on the roof.
Good evening. Simone M. Freeman of Amato Law Group, six 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 Old Country Road, Suite nine oh one, Garden City, New York, one one five three zero, appearing on behalf of the applicant, Verizon Wireless.
Thank you. As you heard during the Planning Department's presentation, the public hearing on this matter was closed the last time it was on. So it's really just on today for us to make a decision. You heard, presume, the proposed resolution, resolutions offered by the Planning Department?
Yes.
And you're in agreement with them?
Yes, we do agree with the conditions.
Any questions from any member of the Board? Okay, then, as the public hearing was already closed the last time, we need a motion on this secret.
In the matter of special exception petition TC two thousand and eighteen dash zero one, I move that we adopt a secret negative declaration as recommended by the Planning Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, so adopted. Now on the resolution on the application itself.
In the matter of special exception petition TC two thousand and eighteen dash zero one, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
Matter is concluded. Thank you.
The next item is a telecommunications application, TC two thousand and eighteen dash oh three. Number one, reason for report, the Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on July fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen to consider the above referenced application for a special exception for a personal wireless service facility pursuant to chapters two forty-two and three twenty-two, thirty point three B of the Smithtown Town Code. The applicant is New York S M S A Limited Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless, care of Amato Law Group, P L L C six 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 Old Country Road, Suite nine zero one, Garden City, New York, one one five three zero. The site is rectangular shaped parcel dealt, developed with a four-story office building with related parking located at three thirty Motor Parkway in Hopg. The site currently has one wireless facility collocated on the roof. The zoning and land use, the site is zoned L I, and there's an office to the north. Is zoned L I with office and industrial uses. To the south is the Town of Islip. East is zoned L I, office and restaurant. And west is zoned L I with an office.
And for the record, L I is light industrial?
Yes, correct. Staff report, description of proposed P W S F, the applicant is, is a proposal to install a personal wireless service facility consisting of nine wireless telecommunications panel antennas and associated equipment mounted on the roof of an existing four-story office building. Other personal wireless service facility sites in the area are Monopole and Kennedy Drive in Hopg, a Suffolk County Water Authority tower installation on Wick's Path in Comac, and a rooftop installation on Jericho Turnpike in Comac. The nearest three Verizon sites are located in Hopg with two rooftop installations on Adams Avenue and Vanderbilt Moore Parkway and a Monopole installation on Henry Street in Comac. One of the three locations is a multiple carrier site. Location, proposed facility is not located in or near any identified avoidance areas such as flood hazard zone, wetlands, or parks. B, the proposed facility is located in an opportunity site. Because proposed personal wireless service facility antennas and related equipment would be mounted on the roof of an existing four-story office building. C, therefore, the proposed facility meets the location standards. The sighting, proposed facility meets the sighting standards because the antennas and related appurtenances would be mounted on the roof of the building which is set back approximately one hundred and five feet from Motor Parkway and approximately seventy-five feet from Marcus Boulevard. B, while the proposal does not appear to have adverse visual impacts on the surrounding area, additional screening of the proposed facility, including additional perimeter plantings along Motor Parkway and Marcus Boulevard may be required at the time of site plan review. Design, A, the antennas will be mounted on poles along the northwest and south facing sides of the roof. The extension of the antennas will be limited to six feet above the top edge of the roof to ensure the overall height of the proposal is kept to a minimum to reduce or eliminate any visual impact to the adjacent commercial properties. B, the proposed antennas are externally pole-mounted panel antennas. C, all related equipment would be installed on the roof of the building. D, therefore, proposal meets the design standards. Further review of the design will be incorporated in the site plan approval process to assure that materials, color, size, screening, landscaping, et cetera, will minimize the visual impact of the personal wireless service facility panels and related equipment. Alternatives analysis, the application does not include proposed alternatives. Upon review, the proposal and surrounding area planning has no alternatives to propose. Description of attachments, attached copies of the site plan and elevations of the proposed rooftop insulation submitted with the application. Recommended decision, findings of fact. The proposal, one, the proposal meets the location standard and that is in an opportunity site. Two, the proposal meets the sighting standards in that it is mounted on the roof of an existing structure. Three, the proposal meets the design standards in that it would be mounted on the roof of an existing structure and will not extend more than six feet above the building's roof line. Four, the proposal meets the safety standards per section two forty-two dash five D in that it meets the Town of Smithtown Building Code, which incorporates section three one zero eight point four of New York State Building Code for wind loads in accordance with T I A dash E I A twenty-two. And the facility is not roof mounted. B, the Planning Department recommends approval of this application. The board must await a secret determination from the Department of Environment and Waterways before taking any action to approve this petition.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Denise Vista with Amato Law Group, six 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 Old Country Road, Garden City, New York, one one five three zero. Here tonight on behalf of the applicant, New York S M S A Limited Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless. Verizon Wireless is respectfully requesting a tier-two special exception permit pursuant to section three twenty-two dash thirty point three B of the town, excuse me, of the town's wireless ordinance for the, as indicated in the Planning Department memo that was just read, the facility meets all location, sighting, and design and safety standards set forth in the code. In addition, it is an eligible facilities request pursuant to section sixty-four oh nine of the Spectrum Act. Because it is a co-location, there is an existing carrier on the roof, which is AT&T. And in connection with that, the facility will be consistent with the existing AT&T facility. Will not extend above the height of the AT&T facility or any appurtenance on the roof. I do have the engineering expert here with me this evening. If you'd like him to go through the build, or I can just give you a short synopsis.
It's really entirely up to you.
Okay, I'll just have Mr. Fallasco.
And you can either have him do it, or you can do it.
Sure. Mr. Fallasco?
As described earlier, the property is-
Sir, before we start, just please give your name, your business address for the record, please.
Daniel Fallasco. My offices are at ninety-four Steuben Boulevard, Neshkanset, New York, one one seven six seven.
Thank you, sir. Please proceed.
As described, the facility is on the northwest corner of Marcus Boulevard and Motor Parkway. It's a four-story building. And what we are proposing is to go on the roof of the building where AT&T facilities already are. Our proposal would be to go in the, I guess that would be the southeast area of the roof, the northeast area of the roof, and the northwest area of the roof. I am pointing right now to the area of the roof where AT&T facilities are already located. We'll be in close proximity to them, but will not have any, any interference. Just a couple of key elements right now, the existing stair, excuse me, the existing staircase bulkhead right now is at elevation fifty-nine point six. Our facility will be at approximately fifty-six. So the bulkhead staircase is already higher than our particular facility. All of our equipment will run up through air vents within the building to the roof, so there's no external conduit required in order to get all of our utilities up to the roof. Once they're on the roof, they will run across the base of the roof over sleepers to our equipment. Our equipment will be mounted to the east side of the existing staircase bulkhead. And as I said, the bulkhead is already at elevation fifty-nine six, and our equipment will be basically approximately elevation fifty-four. So as you can see, everything will be lower than existing elevations on the roof. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does somebody have any questions for him, Mr. Fallasco?
Oh.
No.
We don't.
Okay. And actually, if I can for the record, this is the notice materials, affidavit of posting, affidavit of mailing.
Thank you.
At this time, then, I would like to submit into the record two reports, one of which is an engineering report with a structural certification, but that was prepared by Daniel Fallasco, P E P C, dated July thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and a revised antenna site FCC compliance assessment and report dated July tenth, two thousand and eighteen. That was prepared by Ten, Tenefield Telecom Group.
You can just give those to Mr. Colato, he'll hand them up, and we'll distribute them. Just two reports here, right?
As indicated in the FCC report that was just submitted, it will comply with all FCC regulations in addition to the engineering report, which demonstrates that it will comply with all applicable New York State and local building codes. So at this time, unless the board does not have any further questions, I do not have anything further.
Are these all copies of the same report?
Yes, there's one for, there's eight copies total.
Thank you. We'll each keep one, and then we'll give the rest to the Planning Department, to the extent anybody there wants to read it. All right, so the applicant is finished with their presentation. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on this particular matter? Seeing none, any questions, any additional questions from any member of the Board on this particular matter? Seeing none. As you heard in the presentation by the Planning Department, we will not and cannot act on this until we have the recommendation from our Department of Environment and Waterways on the secret, on the environmental issues. The way that our Department of Environment and Waterways does it is that they prefer to have the public hearing done and closed before they issue their comments, which basically means that, as was the first application that we just heard, you have to come back a second time for our decision, because we can't make it until we get D E W's recommendations.
Yes, we're familiar with the process.
So, with that being said, we're gonna move first, a motion, please, to close the public hearing at this time.
In the matter of special exception petition TC two thousand and eighteen dash zero three, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, so closed. Now with respect to the, the recess to a new date, I believe we just have one meeting in August?
Fifteenth, Jimmy.
August?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth. All right, so August fifteenth, does anybody have any information on to, as to whether or not that would give D E W sufficient time to give us their recommendation?
I think it should be enough.
Okay, so what we'll do is we're going to recess the matter to August fifteenth, but I'm going to ask the Planning Department staff that if, for some reason, on August fourteenth, if we don't have their recommendation yet, that we notify the applicant's attorney so that we maybe can continue with, without them having to come here for nothing. Okay? So that being said, please, a motion to recess and adjourn this matter to the August fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, meeting of this Board.
In the matter of special exception petition TC two thousand and eighteen dash zero three, I move that we recess and adjourn the public hearing to the August fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, meeting of the Planning Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, so adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.
Good night.
The next item is a preliminary subdivision, number eleven forty-six, Foxwood Estates in Smithtown. The applicant requests preliminary approval to subdivide three point two acres and four lots. An update, this application was last heard at the June thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen Planning Board meeting. At that meeting, the Planning Board recessed the hearing to July eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, in order to review and revise the wording in the alternate denial resolution prepared by Paul Sabatino the second, counsel to the board, and to conduct an onsite inspection. Attached to this memorandum is the revised alternate denial resolution prepared by Paul Sabatino the second, counsel to the Planning Board, and the Planning Department's advisory report dated September eighth, two thousand and seventeen, including resolutions to adopt a secret negative declaration and conditionally approve the preliminary layout.
Well, I think we're- Well, first of all, I don't, and I'm not sure if, I don't believe the alternate resolution, since it was revised, was read into the record, certainly not in its revised form, correct?
I don't believe so.
So I think that the alternate resolution, since it was never read into the record, should be read into the record. And I also think that for purposes of completeness, we should also just read the proposed resolution into the record as well.
By planning and D W?
Correct.
Okay.
And everything, everything else that's in the memo was already read into the record at prior hearing?
Correct.
Okay.
So I'm gonna start with the alternate denial resolution?
No, I think you should start with the secret resolution, then go to the approval resolution, and then go to the alternate resolution.
Okay.
Just like that.
Okay, so Department of Environment and Waterways offers the following-
But before we start, I think the public hearing was still open?
Correct.
So before we do that, since the public hearing is still open, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on this particular matter? Sir, please come up. Give your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Marty Lyons, eighth White Pine Court, Smithtown, New York. I do, my wife and I have been in White Pine Court for twenty-two years, raised three kids, watched them get on the school bus at Landing Avenue and White Pine Court. My big concern with this estate is, as everybody knows, that Landing Avenue is really a cut-through from Rose Street all the way down Landing, all the way to Edgewood, all the way to St. James, and all the way to Stony Brook. There is so many blind spots on Landing Avenue. If you're coming south from Rose, the first one would be the top side of Oakside. When you look to your right, you're looking back to the golf course. When you look down, you're looking down a hill. When your next street would be the street on your right, that's White Pine Court. When you look to your right, you're looking down a hill. When you look back to your left, you have a curve coming from all the traffic from Rose. You go further down the hill, you got Landing Meadow on the left-hand side. Landing Meadow has a blind spot in both directions. You have a curve coming from the south, and you got a hill coming from the north. You go around that curve, you got the bottom side of Oakside Street. You go around that curve, you've got the bottom side of Oakside Street, which is also has a blind spot in both directions, looking back to the north. I'm all for improving the quality of life of the residents of Smithtown. I'm all for building residential homes that would improve the property value for all the people here in Smithtown. I'm all for the revitalization of downtown Smithtown. I just think that the planning board needs to look at this plan and consider an alternative exit, an entrance, if you allow this subdivision to be built. Landing Avenue is very dangerous, especially from the months of September all the way through May, when school is out. If you go down Landing, going south to hit Edgewood, the traffic sometimes backs up all the way from Edgewood, all the way past the bridge, all the way, you know, up to the reserve. So, there is a traffic pattern issue. The other concern I would have is for the homes that are in White Pine Court. If you, when the board approved 22 years ago for the houses to be built, I live in the back house. I catch all the water coming from Landing Avenue through White Pine Court, all the way to the back. There are two drains on the outside between number eight and number nine, but if the water flows down, every house down there will get flooded. Every house was required to put in a drywall in the, in their driveway. I would consider, ask the board to consider, what will they do with the subdivision where the elevation is so much lower than where the houses are on White Pine Court? If the board can come up with a resolution to maybe put a retaining wall in to protect the homes on White Pine Court, if they can come up with a plan to divert traffic in and out of that new residential area without an exit to Landing Avenue, I'm all for it. I think that it is a beautiful piece of property. The owners have the right to build on it, if they can build safely, and we can protect the environment here in Smithtown. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else in the audience wish to be heard on this particular matter? Is there anybody here on behalf of the applicant?
Do you want me to speak now?
It's up to you.
No.
You should at least acknowledge your, that you're here for the applicant, and then.
I just didn't know how you were conducting it, since Mr. Lyons spoke before the applicant. But, anyway, it's been a long time coming, and tonight, hopefully, we'll resolve the matter.
Please give your name and address for the record.
Vincent J. Tramarkov, 1038 West Yerko, Turnpike, Smithtown, New York. As you know, the reason why we're here tonight, the board some time ago decided not to vote the SECRE and actually hold it subject to court. Your counsel indicated that that would be keeping the matter in suspended animation. We reluctantly had to go to the Supreme Court, and Justice Santorelli said, you first have to decide the SECRE, whether you give a negative declaration, whether you give a negative declaration with conditions, or you pause decade. That's the first thing that has to happen, and I assume that the board is going to vote on that first tonight. Secondly, with respect to the subdivision, the, the board should recognize the fact that, first of all, it's been going on for a number of years, and the planning department recommended approval. And why do they recommend approval? Not only because the planning board thought it was a good application, every other department in this town recommended approval. The engineering department. To answer Mr. Lyons, the engineering department in this town is probably one of the toughest departments in the state of New York when it comes to water runoff. They will make sure that all the water runoff from this subdivision is contained in this particular subdivision. It's the law. We can't circumvent the law. Engineering is going to be looking at this project from the beginning to the end. There are many, many inspections. They will require adequate drainage. So, the issue of flooding will be taken care of by the engineering department. You talk about environmental. Our environmental department has got to be one of the toughest departments in Suffolk County. They recommend a negative declaration. That means that the subdivision does not create an adverse effect on the environment. And as I indicated before, the, the court said you have three choices, but you do have to act on that SECRE before you do anything else. The highway department, while the highway department really does, doesn't have any jurisdiction, only because it's a private road. Now, that private road will be constructed pursuant to the rules and regulations of the engineering department. One of the things that the, the second proposal to deny indicated that some time ago, the engineering, the, the planning board approved a certain-sized road, and they did it, it usually, they don't do that, but it was out of context. We came to this board, and the board said, okay, this is what you can do with that. Engineering later on said, you know, we really want mountable curves to take care of the situation, not only because of water runoff, but also if a car has to pull off to the side, it's going to keep the street that we're going to build intact and also allow the, the, the car to traverse that curve. A mountable curve is different than a regular curve. You can kind of drive up on it and go over it without damaging your car. Now, traffic safety. Traffic safety had a comment, and that comment was, look, we're really concerned, as Mr. Lyons said, about traffic and, and the views from the road, and what's going to happen when you have another, basically, a, a private road or driveway. So, traffic safety said, look, we, although we have indicated in the map, and I should put this up so that. We have indicate, indicated on the proposed map, a buffer on the side where there is other houses indicating that we're going to do a 10-foot-wide planting buffer. The suggestion was, and it was a good one, keep that back 35 feet from the road. So, there'll be a site distance, or there won't be a site distance issue when you pull out of the subdivision. DEW not only recommended a negative declaration, which, as you know, is a good recommendation, they also went through a tree clearing preservation plan. So, this thing has been looked at and looked at, and every department, again, has approved the application. So, there is, and I understand the control, the concern of Mr. Lyons and his neighbors, we certainly don't want to cause a problem. On the other hand, we do have a right to bill, and we would like to do that without causing anybody any issues. So, that's, that's the first thing. The situation with respect to the, the five criteria. The opposition, I guess I have to call it the opposition recommendation written by Mr. Sabatino, first of all.
Well, that's an alternate resolution, because everybody on the board may not vote the same way, so that we have the resolution recommending, or for approval, as recommended by the planning department, sets forth the reasons for approval, and then we have an alternate resolution setting forth the reasons for denial, so that if there are people who vote each way, they have the basis of their respective positions set forth on the record. And as soon as you're finished, I'm, I'm going to have Mr. Colorado read all the resolutions into the record, so that we, that we will vote on them.
Okay. Thank you. The protection of the, of the character of the area. This is an R-21 zone. It's not an R-43 zone. So, although there's references to property across Landing Avenue, which is zoned R-43, all of this area is zoned R-21. We're certainly within the character of the area. The adjoining subdivision, which, again, was just referenced to by Mr. Lyons, that's all R-21 zone. And as a matter of fact, many variances were granted to this subdivision when it was built. Not only steep slope variances, but more importantly, they allowed front yard setback variances. And I can show you, and I think that the planning department did have maybe put copies of the, of the other subdivision, but here it is. I know it's hard to see, but that's the biggest. I could get it blown up. And you can see that all of these lots in the other subdivision have narrow frontages. And it, well, it was done, I guess, for two reasons, to get as many lots as they could in there, and also, as the lots come out, they do get wider. So, variances were granted there, and I guess, nobody looked at it and said, wow, that doesn't conform to the character of the area. Mention was made in the first proposed alternate resolution that, well, we're asking for variances. Yeah, we're asking for variances. Let's look at them. The main variances are the setback of each house. We meet the frontage requirements. We're not asking for you to let us build narrow lots. The problem, and there really wasn't a problem, we felt that if you gave us a variance for a 40-foot setback rather than a 50-foot setback, the people in the rear, in the other subdivisions, will have more distance from their backyards to our backyards. We can move this back 10 feet.
You mean from their backyards to the back of these houses?
Yeah, yeah. We can move it back 10 feet. As a matter of fact, when the initial map was done, we had to do a compliance map. We can comply with every zoning requirement in R-21. We just thought it was a better deal to do it this way, wherein the houses are set closer to the cul-de-sac, and more distance is given to the rear yards. Additionally, the road, this is a 40-foot radius paved cul-de-sac. There is also 10 feet here. And when you think about it, a private road is owned by the people who live in the subdivision. So, really, if you're standing in this cul-de-sac and you're standing on the pavement, it really is 50 feet from the edge of the pavement. Now, there's going to be a, what they call a mountable curb, but that'll be around the inside line of what you see here. Now that I'm on it, I might as well get into the other statement, which I believe is in the alternate proposed resolution. They're saying, well, the existing house is close to this proposed road. Well, it is. It's 25 feet. Then there is a 10-foot buffer. The road is then 20 feet wide, and there is another 10-foot wide as part of the road, and another 10 feet, which we want to do the planting. We can move this whole road over, and we will conform to the 50-foot setback, front yard setback. It wouldn't look as good, and it wouldn't be as protective to this neighbor right here. So, that's why we did that. So, again, I want to emphasize that we could conform, but what's better? What we propose, or just conforming to the rules? When they built the other subdivision 25 years ago, whenever it was, variances were granted, and probably because it was a better way to do the subdivision than to do it without variances. Maybe they would have gotten one or two less lots, but more people got to live in Smithtown, and I think it was a good thing. One of the other criterias, protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Well, this has no adverse effect on the health, safety, and welfare of the community. We meet every criteria of the health department. As you know, the health department requires 20,000 square feet. Every one of our lots is more than 20,000 square feet. There is one variance on one of the lots from 24 to, I believe, 19. But, in reality, there's 24,000 square feet. It's a steep slope, and that's, as our ordinance doesn't allow us to count it in the, in the calculations of lot area, but in reality, it's right there, and it's part of, of the Is this an undesirable change in the character of the area? It is the character of the area. It's R-21. We're conforming, and I should say, we could conform to every point of the zoning requirements. We just feel this is a better way to do it. If the planning board feels it's better to keep a 50-foot setback, we're just going to have a shorter rear yard, and we can conform with everything, we can push the roadway over, and we can get that 50 feet. So, we don't see any, any health issues. As I said, we can conform to all the health department requirements. Is it a change in the, an undesirable change in the character of the area? Again, we're conforming to the character of the area. This is the zoning. We're not asking for a change of zone. We're complying, most importantly, with the area. The area is, requirement is 21,760, and every one of our lots is larger than that. So, I don't see that as an issue. Finally, is this a self-created issue? No, we're making an application. There's a house, and about 3.2 acres surrounding the house. We certainly would like to develop it. It's not something that we can just live with the way it is. The other thing that Mr. Lyons suggested was, can you come out any other way? And I don't see it. There's really no other way to, to do that. However, with the traffic department controlling how we do the ingress and egress, and the maintaining of the buffer, the foliage back that 35 feet, it will alleviate as much as possible the, the safety issue. I'm not saying that there is no safety issue here. Of course, there is. Anytime you pull out onto Landing Avenue, there's a safety issue. However, my client has been pulling out on Landing Avenue for, I don't know, 30, 40 years. So, it's really not going to change what's being done there. There won't be a, an egress for the existing house on Landing Avenue where it is now. One of the requirements of the planning department is to close off that ingress and egress. So, we're all going to go in and out on the private road. Private road, obviously, is going to be maintained by the people who buy in that subdivision. It's not going to be a burden on the taxpayers or the highway department. The, I went into the distance of the existing house and the roadway. Again, we could move it over, but. Again, we could move it over, but I don't think the board would want that. The only one really affected by that is the existing homeowner, Mr. and Mrs. Perna, or someone who buys that house in the future, and they'll be able to see what's going on because they're going to look at the property and they're going to see where the house is. The only other way to do it is demolish the house. Now, when you demolish the house, you cause more environmental issues than if you leave the house. So we don't think that's a good alternative. There was a comment made that the houses on the other side of Landing Avenue are 70, 80-feet setbacks. Again, they're R-43, a different zoning district, a one-acre zoning. Our house is 87 feet from Landing Avenue. So if you want to say it doesn't look like the rest of the houses on Landing, it's not so. It's setback. It's set, as I said, 87 feet. I said with respect to the subdivision next door, they were all granted variances, and we're asking no more than this point giving us variances. I think our variances are less intrusive and less noticeable than the existing subdivision as all lots do conform to the width of the property at the setback line. I think I mentioned, and I'll just say it again, if you're standing in the cul-de-sac with that 10-foot buffer, as I showed you there, not a buffer, around the paving, you're really 50 feet away. And again, it's all owned by the road. The private road will be not dedicated to the town, but deeded to all the homeowners. They'll all own the property. There'll be covenants that they have to maintain the road and repair it when it needs repairs. So I think, I think that about covers it, except I just want to comment on a couple of things with respect to the alternate. Or do you want me to wait and?
Well, it's up to you. What I'm planning on doing, we've had this on several times before. We've had a significant amount of public comment, pro and con on this application. We have a proposed secret negative resolution. We have a proposed resolution approving the application and a proposed resolution denying the application. I'm going to ask Mr. Colado to come up and for purposes of clarity and completeness to read all three resolutions into the record, and then we're going to close the hearing and vote on them. However, before I do that, I am going to give the board members an opportunity to ask you questions, if they have any, asking that any comments be held, only questions, because we have two resolutions, one for, one against. And hopefully, those resolutions encompass everybody's position on the board, whether it's for or against. So when you're finished speaking, I'm going to ask if any of the board members have any questions of you, and then I'm going to close the public hearing and we're going to, we're going to, we're going to read the resolutions, and then we're going to close the public hearing, and then we're going to vote on it. So it's really up to you.
I'd just like an opportunity to comment on the alternate resolution after it's heard because I understand it was modified. So I can wait for that.
You mean after we read it?
Yeah. Yes.
If you prefer to come up and comment on that at that time, if you feel it's necessary, that's up to you.
Okay. That's fair enough.
Okay. So at this point, Mr. Colado, please go up back up to the microphone and please read into the record the three resolutions that we have before us tonight. The first being the secret negative resolution. The second being the proposed resolution that is in favor of the application. And the third being the proposed alternate resolution, which is in opposition to the application.
Okay, so the first resolution. The Department of Environment and Waterways offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2018, Recommended Secret Declaration for Number 1146, Map of Foxwood Estates. Whereas the planning board has considered the secret recommendation from the Department of Environment and Waterways and indicated that any potential adverse environmental impacts associated with said project does not rise to the level of significance which would require the preparation of an environmental impact statement. Now therefore, be it first resolved that the planning board, after due study and deliberation of the subject record, issue a secret negative declaration, determination of non-significance, and EIS is not necessary. In the matter of the application for subdivision approval by Joseph Perna for Number 1146, Map of Foxwood Estates, for the following reasons. A, the proposal does not appear to significantly threaten any unique or highly valuable environmental or cultural resources as identified and are regulated by the Environmental Conservation Law of the State of New York or Smithtown Town Code. B, the parcel does not appear to suffer from any severe environmental development constraints, no poor soil properties, no high groundwater, and no unmanageable slopes. C, the small size and nature of the proposal mitigate against a significant adverse impact upon the environment. D, the proposal appears to be consistent with the planned use of the parcel and compatible with neighboring land uses. E, the project as proposed on the tree preservation and land clearing plan prepared by Michael James Hillebrand, licensed land surveyor and dated October 14, 2016, provides the retention of a significant amount of existing trees and natural vegetation upon development of subject parcel. Such preservation shall be ensured by the placement of snow fencing or orange mesh construction fencing along all limits of clearing and around any individual trees to be preserved with clearing, within clearing areas. This is to be done to the satisfaction of the Environmental Protection Director, and said fencing shall be maintained in place by the applicant until the completion of all land clearing and grading activities at the subject parcel. The planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2018, Subdivision Preliminary Approval for Number 1146, Map of Foxwood Estates. Whereas the planning board has considered the request for preliminary approval of Joseph Perna to subdivide 3.2 acres into four lots. Now therefore, be it first resolved that the planning board hereby approves the preliminary map of Number 1146, Map of Foxwood Estates, subject to the following conditions. One, the final submission shall include all requirements of Section 248-15 and 248-16 of the subdivision regulations. Two, the applicant shall mend the planting buffer area to begin 35 feet west of the east property line along Landing Avenue and run approximately 160 feet long. Three, the applicant shall remove the existing curb cut for Lot 1 on Landing Avenue. Access to Lot 1 shall be from Foxwood Court. Four, the applicant shall install mountable curbs on Foxwood Court. Second resolve that this preliminary approval shall be valid for a six-month period to expire on March 13, 2018. So that part would have to be changed to January 18 to 2019, because that's the six-month period.
So when that is voted on, it will be deemed that it reads January 19?
18.
January 18, 2019, the expiration instead of March 13, 2018. Now, you've read the proposed secret negative resolution. You've read the proposed approval resolution, which is recommended by the planning department. Now, please read the proposed alternate resolution into the record as well, and then we can close the hearing and then we can vote.
Okay. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2018, Denial Preliminary Layout for Subdivision Number 1146, Map of Foxwood Estates, Revised as of July 10, 2018. First, whereas, the proposed subdivision known as Number 1146, Map of Foxwood Estates, is comprised of three tax lots in fronts on Landing Avenue. In Smithtown, the parcel is 3.2 acres and is located in the R-21 zoning district. The land surrounding the site to the north, south, and west is zoned R-21 and developed with single-family residences. The land east of the site is zoned R-43 and is developed with single-family residences. Smithtown Landing Country Club is approximately 825 feet north of the site, on the east side of the Landing Avenue, and there is an existing house on the property that is for main, Lot 1. And second, whereas, the applicant is proposing to construct a road approximately 340 feet long off of Landing Avenue with a cul-de-sac. In May 2014, the applicant submitted a waiver request to reduce the minimum pavement width and cul-de-sac pavement radius for the proposed road, although typically such a request will be decided at the time of preliminary layout approval. In a departure from normal practice, procedural precedent, the applicant urged the town planning board to consider the request prior to considering the overall subdivision. The town planning board agreed to consider the applicant's request. In October 15, 2014, the town planning board reduced the minimum pavement width from 30 feet to 20 feet and reduced the pavement radius for the cul-de-sac from 50 feet to 40 feet, subject to the following conditions. A, no curb shall be installed, and an eight-foot-wide grass shoulder shall be installed and maintained in order to accommodate parked cars. B, this decision is related to the road dimension request only and does not imply approval or endorsement of any proposed subdivision application or variance request. And third, whereas, fearing the lack of curbs would make it difficult to properly control stormwater runoff from the road, the town engineering department recommended on October 30, 2014, that the town planning board amend its conditional, condition of approval to allow mountable curbing. The town planning board indicated at the time that the proper time to consider such an amendment would be at the time of preliminary layout approval. The plans presently before the town planning board show a mountable curb along Foxwood Court. And fourth, whereas, the topography of the site slopes from 146 feet above sea level at the northeast corner to 110 feet above sea level, the southwest corner. The site contains steep slopes on the western and southern parts as indicated in blue shading on the preliminary layout. The site does not contain any wetland or natural surface features, and the depth of groundwater is greater than 10 feet. Fifth, whereas, all the lots conform to the minimum lot area and frontage requirements for the R-21 zoning district, except for Lot 3, which is 18,568 square feet. And sixth, whereas, however, the proposed layout will require the following variances, substantive precedent at the time of final plot approval. Lot 1, reduce minimum front yard setback from 50 feet to 25 feet along Foxwood Court. Lot 2, reduce minimum front yard setback from 50 feet to 40 feet. Lot 3, reduce minimum front yard setback from 50 feet to 40 feet. Reduce minimum lot area from 21,780 square feet to 18,568 square feet. Lot 4, reduce minimum front yard setback from 50 feet to 40 feet. Seventh, whereas, the granting of such variances is governed by the provisions of Section 248-30 and Section 322-30.4 of the Town of Smithtown Town Code, which identifies specific criteria, all of which must be met in order to, for the planning board to grant the minimum front yard setback and minimum lot areas described above during final approval, and which make reference to considerations such as protecting the character of the neighborhood, protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the community, undesirable changes in the character of the neighborhood, detriment to nearby properties, and feasible alternatives, among other considerations, substantive precedent. And eighth, whereas, the engineering department reviewed the preliminary layout and recommends that the board modify the prior condition of approval that prohibited curbs so as to allow mountable curbs along Foxwood Court to properly control stormwater. Ninth, whereas, the town highway department has no comment on the proposed road, as it is to remain private, but did mention a possible drainage easement on Landing Avenue since the pools have not been located. And tenth, whereas, the town traffic safety department inspected the site and is concerned that the trees and dense vegetation on the property to the north could reduce visibility for vehicles exiting Foxwood Court onto Landing Avenue, and therefore asked the planning board to ensure that the corner clearance requirement in the zoning ordinance, Section 322-16, is complied with. Eleventh, whereas, the Town Department of Environment and Waterways reviewed the preliminary map and tree preservation land clearing plan and recommends several conditions related to land clearing and other site preparation work, which the town planning department stated will be recommended as conditions of approval at the time of final approval. Twelfth, whereas, as depicted on the map, the town planning department recommends a planting buffer along a portion of the north property line in order to screen the new road from the adjacent property owner to the north, which buffer it believes should begin approximately 35 feet west of the current property line along Landing Avenue in order to allow adequate visual clearance for the drivers at the intersection of Foxwood Court and Landing Avenue, and which buffer area should be approximately 160 feet long. Thirteenth, whereas, the town planning department also recommends that the curb cut onto Landing Avenue from Lot 1 be removed and that access to Lot 1 be from Foxwood Court. And fourteenth, whereas, members of the town planning board have personally inspected the site. And fifteenth, whereas, prior to the recess of the public hearing on this application, on April 11, 2018, the town planning board adopted a procedural motion directing the preparation of an alternate resolution to be considered and voted upon. Once the public hearing has been closed for the purpose of denying the aforementioned subdivision application for the reasons articulated in that procedural motion. Sixteenth, whereas, this alternative resolution has been filed and considered prior to the closing of the public hearing on this matter, at which public hearing, all interested parties and the public at large have been afforded the opportunity to be heard. Now therefore, be it first, first resolved, that the planning board hereby makes the following findings and determinations with respect to preliminary layout of Number 1146, Map of Foxwood Estates. One, the proposed design depicts a front yard setback on Lot 1 of only 25 feet, even though the zoning ordinance requires a setback of 50 feet. Two, the proposed three new homes are intended to have front yard setbacks of only 40 feet. Three, the opposite side of Landing Avenue is in the R-43 zoning district, which requires a front yard setback of 60 feet. Four, based on visual site inspections, all the homes in the vicinity of this proposed subdivision meet or exceed the required front yard setback. In fact, the three closest homes on the opposite side of the street have setbacks of approximately 80, 90, and 120 feet respectively. Five, at the first public hearing on this application, the applicant expressed an unwillingness to comply with the front yard setback requirements and the proposed planning board resolution for approval of the preliminary layout predicated on the variances described in the sixth, whereas clause above, has not changed since that time. Six, approval of the subdivision with the above-described variances would have an adverse effect on the established character of the neighborhood. Seven, the applicant has a reasonable alternative in that there is enough room to subdivide the land into four lots that comply with the setbacks. Eight, approval of this subdivision will set an undesirable precedent. Nine, on Landing Avenue, this new intersection would lie in between White Pine Court to the north and Landing Meadow Road to the south. There is reduced visibility, a public safety concern from the hill to the north as Landing Avenue slopes downward just before the sharp downward turn south of Landing Meadow Road. And 10, the town planning board decision to consider the approved, the applicant's request in 2014 to reduce the minimum pavement width from 30 feet to 20 feet and to reduce the pavement radius for the cul-de-sac from 50 feet to 40 feet was made subject to the public representations and condition that the decision was related to the road dimensions requested only and should not be construed to imply, let alone grant approval or endorsement of any proposed subdivision application or variance request, which representations and conditions were agreed by the applicant's attorney on the public record at the time of said decision. And beat furthered, number two, decisions, second resolve that the planning board hereby denies the preliminary layout of Number 1146, Map of Foxwood Estates, based on, one, the foregoing findings and determinations, and two, the fact that the proposed preliminary layout will require variances at the time of final plot approval pursuant to Section 248-30 and Section 322-30.4 of the Town of Smithtown Town Code, which identifies specific criteria, all of which must be met in order for the planning board to grant the front yard and minimum lot area variances described above, and compliance with which would require findings and determinations that are in conflict with the foregoing findings and determinations. And three, effective date, the third resolve that this resolution shall take effect immediately upon approval.
Thank you, Mr. Colado. We've now had, read into the record, into the record in their entirety, the proposed secret negative resolution, the proposed resolution for approval recommended by the planning department, and the proposed alternate resolution for denial. And Mr. Tramaco, you indicated that you wish to make some comments.
I do very briefly. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Sabatino for reiterating all those whereses, which basically indicate what we've agreed to throughout this application. Just a couple of things. When we get past the whereses and we get to the findings, the question of Lot 1 having only a 25-foot setback, I've indicated that we could comply, and a map was submitted showing compliance. We just feel this is a better way to protect everybody in the area. The proposed three new houses have front yard setbacks of only 40 feet. I've indicated, we can go back to 50, but it really doesn't make any sense. It makes more sense to do what we proposed to do. The opposite side of Landing Avenue has nothing to do with the zoning of R-21 on our side of the street, which is all zoned R-21. And if you want to talk about my client's house, it's 87 feet setback from Landing Avenue. So I think that's a bogus argument. Based on visual inspection, they talked about, the decision talks about, again, homes on the opposite side of the street. Again, that's R-43, but we're 87 feet, so we, in effect, somebody riding along Landing Avenue isn't going to say, our house sits out like a sore thumb because it's closer than all the houses on the other side of Landing Avenue. I don't know. I don't know that I expressed an unwillingness to comply with the front yard setbacks, I believe I indicated again tonight, and if that was interpreted that way, I'll correct it. We can do the setbacks at fifty feet, we just think it would be a terrible situation to impose, not only on our client, but on the adjoining neighbors. Approval of the subdivision with the described variances would have an adverse effect on the established character of the area. How could it have an adverse effect when we meet all the zoning requirements? And our lots are bigger than the existing subdivision, which is right next door, which got more variances than we're asking for. The applicant has a reasonable alternative, and there's enough room to subdivide the land into four, if we'd have to knock down the house, there'd be a severe environmental issue, at least in the beginning, knock down many, many, many more trees, this way all of the trees surrounding the Purnit homestead will remain pursuant to what our own environmental department recommends as a tree clearing and preservation plan. You have before you our environmental department that says this is what we want. Approval of the subdivision will have an undesirable precedent. What undesirable precedent? All of the houses on that side are R twenty-one, there is no undesirable precedent here, in fact, it conforms to all of the zoning and requirements of R twenty-one and the subdivision right next door, so I don't I don't understand that, and anyway, it does, to me, it doesn't make any sense. On Landing Avenue, the new intersection would lie between White Pine and Landing Meadow, and there is reduced, and there is a question about that, that's why public safety recommended what they recommended about the setback of foliage being thirty-five feet. Finally, there is commented that the planning board decision to consider the applicant's request to reduce the minimum pavement from thirty to twenty, and basically, the board said that was made subject to public representations and condition that the decision was related to the road dimension request, any proposed subdivision. In other words, it wasn't any kind of admission by the planning board to allow this subdivision, and I agree with that except for three words, let alone grant, that was never in the condition that this planning board made when they approved the road. Maybe that's a paraphrase, but it's certainly not what this planning board said, just look at the second whereas, A and B, there's nothing there about let alone. So that's it, those are my comments, I hope the board will act favorably on this five-year application, thank you.
And now, before we close the public hearing and vote, I'm just going to ask if any members of the board have any questions to ask of Mr. Tramaco. I'm going to ask that we be limited to questions only because hopefully comments on parties' positions are covered by all the resolutions that we just read.
Mr. Chairman, I have questions, but I also certainly would like to avail my right to make comments, because Mr. Tramaco stood here for a lengthy period of time, made some comments, and I think they cannot be addressed by questions, but by my statement of the facts.
Mr. Chase, no, you're a member of the board, we're not part of the we're not part of the hearing, however, if you wish to ask him questions, or if you wish to make any comments at this time, please feel free to do so.
Okay. Mr. Tramaco, in the early part of this process, I asked you how amenable your applicant would be to change the location of that house on the front, and you denied that, and I assume your app you or the applicant still does not wish to amend or compromise on this plan at all.
Are you talking about the existing homestead?
Yes.
There's really nothing we can do with it except throw it down.
Or move it.
Or cut half of it off, or move it, yeah.
You've certainly been.
No, the answer is no.
You've appeared here before the board, and at times, people have said, we're going to raise this building or demolish a portion of what, now all of a sudden, it's environmentally unsound, you're saying, to do anything to touch.
In this particular case, the amount of trees that we would have to knock down, especially if we were going to move it over, that's pulling out an old foundation, digging a new foundation, throwing down trees that would never have to be thrown down if the board allowed the house to stand, that's my answer.
But what we have here, and for folks who haven't seen this map, or who may be watching at home, is you have a house on Landing Avenue, which is, I guess, about seventy feet in width, and we're turning around, and if we were to approve this, say, we're going to put a roadway in the side yard and put three houses and a cul-de-sac in the back of this house, that's basically what you're proposing here. Now, nobody's denying that you have the right to subdivide and do a subdivision here, but this subdivision needs a lot of work before I could consider it viable and an asset to the town. You talk about neighborhood, you said this is the neighborhood's character, I fail to see that. I, how many houses on Landing Avenue or anywhere out throughout this neighborhood have a cul-de-sac in the backyard directly in back of the house with three homes? Now, we've all dealt with the flag lot issue, where we have one house maybe put in somebody's backyard, but you've taken this with this application to the max.
Is that your statement?
No, I'm not, I have more.
Okay.
Now, comment was made that our council drafted this resolution, and as far as I'm concerned, as my tenure on this board, the Planning Department has always done so, and we, the board unanimously passed a procedural motion saying, requesting the Planning Department to do a resolution. In fact, the Planning Department, the next day, got a phone call from an elected official saying, don't do it. So that is why our council drafted this resolution. This is the first time Mr. Flynn told me in his thirty years with the Planning Department that they've never were not allowed to do any work for this board. Now.
You want me to answer that?
Yes.
I have no objection to your council drafting an alternate resolution.
Okay.
That's the chairman's prerogative, the chairman allowed it, that's fine.
No, the Planning Department was told not to prepare the resolution, because a member of this town council calls and says, don't do it, you don't touch that.
Well, I can't speak to that, but the Planning Department did make a recommendation, they're standing by that recommendation, so.
We'll get to the objectivity in a moment. Now, throughout this entire process, over the past few months, myself and other members of this board have been contacted through a particular elected official, as well as intermediaries, saying, this is a, go ahead and do this, we need this, this is good. I don't understand what the interest is for defective subdivision, why people are pushing to have this thing done. It could be done right, and I think every member of this board would approve it, but you don't put a road next to a house and three houses in the backyard.
And I don't understand, and I don't understand your interest in denying it.
Please, let's go.
And how, what separates you.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, gentlemen.
Just vote.
Gentlemen, gentlemen.
No peanut, no buddy from the audience.
We have a photographer who has to take down everything we say, and she can only take down, for the most part, one person at a time.
I have just.
So please don't interrupt each other, let's, one person, the other one speak.
I apologize, I shouldn't have raised my voice.
So that we can, we can get everything down on the record.
This can't be passed by the merits, so it has to be done through subterfuge and backroom phone calls. Now, in the past, the Planning Department, and I've heard this from several people in that department, as well as other another department, where they would get calls from elected officials saying, how is this, is this a good idea? Now, that has changed over the last year, they get, instead, they get phone calls saying, here's the proposal, make it work, and that's wrong. There's a shadow of politicization going over these departments, and these people, and I make no dispersions upon the Planning Department and this excellent staff, they are true professionals, but they are in an enviable position of being pressured to approve things like this, and it's wrong, it is not Smithtown. If you want to do something like this, go into another town somewhere else, but not in my town. That's what my concern is, that's what my feeling is, I have no financial interest in this, I am not making phone calls to people saying how they should vote, unlike other people outside of this board, and that, when I hear these things and there are threats being made to members of the board, I really want to know why, what makes this so important?
I think you ought to ask for an investigation to find out what's going on, if that's the way you feel. And I want to reiterate that the Planning Department made their recommendation a while ago, you didn't agree with it.
This has been going on for the last few months, these phone calls.
Well, that's your statement, I don't know if you're correct or not, but I'm.
I mean, I got a phone call from an elected official saying, oh, you're going to get sued, you're going to lose your house, they're going to do a federal RICO suit against you, because, all because of this? Why is this so important?
Why is it so important to you?
Because it's wrong, it's a fair application.
Well, let the board vote, then, that's the only way we're going to find out.
Are we all set?
I'm done.
Okay, Mr. Chase?
I'm done.
Anybody, any other member of the board have any comments?
You gotta come up to my.
No, 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 any other member of the board have any comments? Or questions to Mr. Tramaco?
I just got one quick question.
Yes.
The description of a flag lot, is this, you know, because I know that the one house behind a house is considered a flag lot, is this considered a flag?
You addressing that to Mr. Tramaco?
No, or the Plan Department.
It's not considered a flag lot, a flag lot is usually, in Smithtown, one house behind the house with a driveway. This is a private road as opposed to a public road. This board has approved numerous private roads in the town, it's not a flag lot. I think the only flag lots that the board has approved were one house behind the house in exigent circumstances. The policy of the board over the years was they didn't like flag lots.
If you don't like flag lots, you're not going to like this.
Okay. Any more questions or comments on the record?
The last time I voted on this.
Well, the last time we voted, we never voted on the merits of this, we only voted on the secret. So we never voted on the merits, so I intend to have us vote on the merits, after we vote on the secret, one, up or down. Now, at this point, I just want to state briefly in response to Mr. Chase's comments regarding calls from public officials, I can only speak for myself, I've been on this board for, I think, thirteen years, maybe more, I can state unequivocally, never once have I ever been called, spoken to, or attempted to be contacted by any elected official regarding this or any other application in thirteen years, that's all I can say.
And myself included in the last ten years.
So, that being said, I first move that we close the public hearing.
Jimmy, you got more? Do you want to take any more from you?
I really don't. Is there anybody who wants to say anything that hasn't already been said? We're not getting into a debate here, is that your client, Mr. Tramaco?
Yes.
Would you prefer her to speak, or you prefer to have us vote on her?
I don't think I can stop her.
I'll take a minute, I'm sorry, I have to say something.
And there was another person who raised their hand in the back, sir, if you wish to speak again, you can come up as well, okay?
What are, I'm being punished right now, all this stuff that you're saying, Mr. Chase, why are you taking it out on me?
I'm not taking it out on you.
I'm an homeowner.
Ma'am, please, please, ma'am, please address your, please address your comments.
This application could be fixed.
Excuse me, Mr. Chase.
I'm not arguing, but I'm being punished for political stuff.
Ma'am, ma'am, please address your comments to the merits of the application and not to any individual board member about their position or personal preference.
I'm not addressing, but I'm being accused, my subdivision is being accused of political stuff, I'm, you're making me, I'm stuck in the middle of your political fights. When you vote, take the political stuff out of it. I'm an homeowner, taxpayer since nineteen seventy-nine. Please, take the political stuff out of the vote.
Thank you. Sir, you wish to speak again?
Yes, sir.
Please come up and just give your name and address for the record again.
Marty Lyons, eight White Pine Court, Smithtown, New York. Ma'am, I do agree with you, take the political connections out of your decision, but number one, add into safety, because that private road is a blind spot. That private road will be when trucks are going in and out, and you can't prevent that, I know you can't.
No, no, this is not, this is not a debate.
You can't.
Sir, two things, please don't repeat what you said before when you spoke at length.
Okay.
You can say anything else, but once we heard it, we don't need to hear it again.
Well, I think, I think.
Secondly.
Yes, sir.
Please don't have any comments with any member of the audience.
Okay.
Everything is being taken down on record here.
Okay.
Then I do, I do apologize.
That's okay, and when people in the audience speak, we, the record doesn't know who it is.
Yes, sir, I do apologize.
So please, if you want to comment on the application, that's something that you haven't already said, please feel free to say, address it to the board.
I'd just like to reiterate the fact that I think that there needs to be a better traffic control with that private road coming out on Landing, there is so much traffic, there's no way, and even her attorney said, you know what, there will be a, you know, blind spots. Well, if you look at the number one cause of death in America, it's cancer. In the top five is traffic accidents. If we can prevent a traffic accident here in Smithtown, whether it's a private road, a public road, any sort of road, I think we as citizens here in Smithtown owe it to ourselves for the people that are passing through, the young kids that are just starting to drive, that road, Smithtown, Landing Road, is a death trap like it is now, and now you're going to add a private road to come into another intersection? It just doesn't make sense from a safety factor, and I think the board, the Planning Board needs to take into consideration the safety of people going in and out or around Smithtown, rather than worrying about a subdivision being built behind a house. Safety first, if we don't have safety, it doesn't really matter what the subdivision looks like, and that private road is going to be a death trap for people coming from the north side of Landing, from the golf course side, all the way down, because by the time you look to the left, you look to your right, people are coming around the curve, you think you can make it, and cars are coming down there at a speed well over the speed limit. Thank you for your time, I hope you consider that in your decision.
Thank you for your comments. At this point, I move that we close the public hearing on this matter.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The hearing is closed. At this point, I move to adopt, I move to adopt the resolution proposed by the Planning Department with respect to the secret. Now, this is only the secret resolution, this is not the merits of the application, this is only the secret negative resolution, I move that we adopt that resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The secret resolution, being secret negative, is adopted. I now move that we adopt the resolution regarding the merits of the application for approval as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department, subject to the words January eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, being substituted for the words March thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, in the last line of the resolution.
Second.
All in favor of that resolution for approval? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
We have a three to two vote, the resolution is approved. Those of you who voted opposed, do you wish to have your reasons for oppose opposition, those set forth in the alternate resolution? In other words, does the alternate resolution set forth the reasons why the two of you voted in opposition? You can either say yes, no, or give other reasons that we haven't already heard.
I think my statements, previous statements on the record stand.
Thank you, the matter is concluded, the resolution is passed.
Thank you.
Next matter. Next matter.
Okay, the next item is a final subdivision, number 1181 Gemini Landing in Fort Solanga. The Board of Zoning Appeals has requested the planning board give a recommendation on BZA case number 17979. This matter involves a request from the Board of Zoning Appeals for the planning board to review and issue a recommendation regarding variance requests currently pending before the BZA for the above referenced subdivision. The yield of the property in full conformance with the zoning is one lot. The applicant has requested the following variances to effectively increase the yield to two lots. Lot one, permit environmentally sensitive land to be altered, slopes in excess of 15%. Permit a structure within 10 feet of any slope 25% or greater, and reduce the minimum lot area from 42,560 square feet to 13,931 square feet. Planning board has the authority to grant many variances related to subdivisions. However, pursuant to Section 24831 of the subdivision regulations, the board does not have the authority to increase the density or grant environmentally sensitive land variances. The Board of Zoning Appeals is the only board with the authority to grant such variances. This is an application to subdivide a 2.52 acre, 109,914 square foot parcel into two single-family lots. There's a single-family residence on the south side of the property that will remain. The property has approximately 271 feet of frontage on an unnamed right-of-way connecting Meadow Glen Road and Berry Hill Drive, and approximately 50 feet of frontage on an unimproved portion of Berry Hill Drive. The site is Zone R43 and is surrounded by Land Zone R43 zoning and developed with single-family residences. The property is currently accessed from Meadow Glen Road. However, as part of the subdivision application, the applicant proposes to extend the improved portion of Berry Hill Drive to the subject parcel in order to provide access to the two lots and abandon the access from Meadow Glen Road. Due to the steep slopes on the property, the yield of the property in full conformance with the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations is one. In order to subdivide the land into two parcels, the proposal requires the above referenced variances. Article 16, Section 277-6 of Town Law authorizes the BZA to grant area variances within a subdivision, but requires that the BZA request a written recommendation from the planning board concerning the proposed variances. Town Law does not describe the criteria that the planning board is supposed to use in developing a recommendation to the BZA. However, it seems likely that the recommendation should be based around the planning board's core mission regarding subdivision approval that centers on the adequacy of access and infrastructure and the character of the neighborhood. Although the variances requested appear to disturb a high percentage of environmentally sensitive lands and substantially reduce the lot area for Lot 1, it appears that the subdivision could be designed in a way to limit the regrading of the slopes, the steep slopes. Furthermore, including steep slopes, the average lot of the two lots is approximately 1.25 acres per lot. This is in character with several of the houses in the area, as they do not meet the minimum lot area due to steep slopes. However, when including steep slopes, it results in a lot, lot area larger than 42,560 square feet. Regarding access, there's adequate frontage on Berry Hill Drive and the unnamed right-of-way to build one additional house. The planning, engineering, and highway departments, and the Department of Environment and Waterways recommend the access come from Meadow Glen Road opposed to Berry Hill Drive. However, this can be determined during preliminary layout review and is not affected by the granting of the requested variances from the Board of Zoning Appeals. Accordingly, the planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2018, Board of Zoning Appeals Variance Recommendation for Number 1181 Map of Gemini Landing 2. Whereas the planning board considers the request of the Board of Zoning Appeals for a recommendation regarding variances to permit environmentally sensitive land to be altered for Lot 1, slopes in excess of 15%, permit a structure within 10 feet of any slope 25% or greater for Lot 1, and reduce the minimum lot area from 42,560 square feet to 13,931 square feet for Lot 1 within the subdivision known as Number 1181 Map of Gemini Landing 2. Therefore, be it first resolved that the planning board hereby recommends that the Board of Zoning Appeals approve the variances associated with the subdivision known as Number 1181 Map of Gemini Landing for the following reasons. One, it appears the subdivision could be designed in a way to limit the regrading of steep slopes. Two, including steep slopes, the average lot area of the two lots is approximately 1.25 acres per lot. This is in character with several of the other houses in the area. And three, there's adequate frontage on Berry Hill Drive and the unnamed right-of-way to build one additional house.
Anybody present here on behalf of the applicant on this matter?
Good evening, Chairman Erhard, members of the board. Matt, thank you. My name is Gordon Ostlich. I reside at 43 Meadow Glen Road in Fort Solanga, and at this point, I'd like to refer my architect...
Are you the applicant?
Yeah.
Okay. Sir, you're referring to your architect?
Mm-hmm.
And you're going to have him go forward from here?
Yeah.
Sir, please come up to the microphone, give your name and business address for the record. I understand you're the architect engaged by the applicant.
Yes. For the record, my name is Michael Morbillo. My firm is Inspire Design Group. My office is located at 1650 Sycamore Avenue in Bohemian, New York.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as was stated in the call of the meeting, yes...
Do you have the update of the posting?
Yes, I do, yeah.
Please hand it up to Mr. Colado. Everything in order?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. As was stated in the call of the meeting, we're looking at a two-lot subdivision. We're creating two parcels, one which is approximately an acre and another one approximately an acre and a half. The lot that we are proposing to divide is, or to create, is presently has frontage on a right-of-way that is Berry Hill Drive, and the property is also presently served by a private driveway which connects to Meadow Glen Road, which my client utilizes to access his home. There is a, currently a ring driveway that runs around the perimeter of the property. He is looking to abandon a portion of a driveway which traverses a substantial steep slope. Part of the request this evening is we are discussing design options with the planning department at this time, still relative to the pros and cons of access to the site, but we had to go before the zoning board first to address the steep slopes and the proximity of construction, you know, relative to those steep slopes. So we're before you this evening, we have no, we completely disagree, we completely agree with the recommendations of the planning department at this time and the resolution that's been offered. And as I mentioned, we are looking at the merits of, as far as access to the, to the property. And right now, as was stated, we are looking at having access off of Berry Hill Drive. Primarily, we are requesting this because years back, we had done a, you know, a very similar application, and that application was predicated on the adjacent property owner who owns, we'll call it, it's referred to as the private right-of-way, although it's basically a private easement, was predicated on the development of that easement by adjacent lots. And we were going to be tying into that, into that driveway that was going to be established by the adjacent property owner. And that driveway has not been established at this time, and we were under, you know, we were told that it would be established. So we waited several years. It was a long stretch of driveway to be able to develop for my client. It wasn't feasible for him to develop a 600-foot driveway when he could develop 250-foot driveway connecting into an actual right-of-way as opposed to going across private land. So we've got information that, from the planning department, that there's still some questions as far as the development of that, of that private easement, which we need to have further discussions with. But at this point, we're before this board for a recommendation to grand relief for the steep slopes. As was mentioned, this is the character of the, of the adjacent area and the adjacent neighborhoods. My clients owned the property for 22 years. He predated the development of the, of the adjacent Berry Hill subdivision, and he's looking to basically enjoy the same rights that those, those folks got when they were able to put up their homes. And if the board has any questions at this time, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, before we do that, I'm going to ask if there's any member of the public or the audience who wishes to make any comments or speak on this particular application. If you do, please come up to the microphone one at a time and state your name and address for the record, and then you can make your comments.
David Scro, 27 Woodhollow Lane, Fort Solanga. My house is directly across from Berry Hill Drive. By way of background, I'm a licensed attorney. I've been actively engaged in the construction business for over 30 years. I've built, I've built many developments in the town, submitted applications within the town. I'm very active in the local Builders Association, the State Builders Association. I submitted a letter today at the board. I don't know if the board members have it in front of them. If not, I have extra copies. Do you have it?
There's no letter attached to our packet.
Okay.
Just give it to Mr. Colado, and he'll give it to us.
I'll just say...
I'll pass them around.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, so just for the record, we have a letter. On the letterhead of David Scro, S C R O, 27 Woodhollow Lane, Fort Solange, New York, 01768. It's addressed to me as chairman of the planning board, dated July 18, 2018. It's three pages long. Sir, do you wish this letter, or copy this letter to be made part of the record?
Yes, I do.
So what I'm going to do is I'm just going to read it and hand it out to the other members of the board so they can take a look at it. Mr. Colado, do you have a copy of that letter?
If it was dropped off in the office, then you'll have a copy of it.
I just want to make sure you have a copy since we're making it part of the record. The planning department will keep a copy on file as part of the record in this matter. They have a copy, yeah. Right, you have a copy.
Mm-hmm.
All right, sir, your July 18, 2018 letter, copies of which you just handed up, is now part of the record in this matter? Do you have any comments that you wish to make other than those which are already in your letter, because those are already part of the record in this matter, so there'll be no need to repeat those?
Yes, I do.
Please go ahead.
Okay. Again, I'd like to state clearly for the record that I support the recommendations of both the highway department, the town engineer, and senior environmental analyst regarding the access that should be from Meadow Glen. I would like to add, in my professional opinion, there is no cost-effective reason for this applicant to have access to Berry Hill Drive opposed to the extension of Berry Hill. I'd like to add that to the record, to make that very clear. Another point I would like to emphasize is that I question the criteria that this board is using to make a recommendation for approval of steep slopes. I find it almost insulting that a recommendation for steep slopes is based on gross area. Okay? Basically, she took the gross area of the property, divided it by two, okay, and said, well, it meets, it meets the character of the area. This application, this variance, does not meet the character of the area. What you do to conform to the character of the area is you take the average lot size after granting the variance. And I pretty made clear in my letter that the proposed variance is inconsistent with the adjacent property, because basically what you're saying, after, after taking into the variance, you're left with a lot that's a little over a quarter acre, when the lot's in the area, and my particular subdivision is 40,000 square feet. So you're basically be granting a variance that takes into consideration after, after the steep slopes, a little over a quarter to an acre. You're talking about a steep slope variance of 68%. It's astounding to me that, that this planning staff can say that's within the character of the area. That, that really doesn't make any sense. And she also, in, in that letter of July 13, makes reference to the fact that the criteria that should be used is the core mission of subdivision approval. That is her words. She uses those words. Now, six years ago, the planning board denied this application based on various reasons, and I've laid them out in my letter. And then now, the planning board is making a recommendation of approval, and I submit to you...
Well, the planning department is making a recommendation of approval.
I, I, I correct myself.
And also, before you mentioned a letter of July 13, you're talking about the memorandum of the planning department?
Yes, I am, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No problem.
So I find it hard to believe or reconcile the fact that when the letter specifically says it's substantially similar, that you could possibly recommend approval on this, both on looking at it from a strictly steep slope variance or from the core mission of subdivision approval. I'd just like, the last point I'd like to emphasize, I've pretty well written a three-page letter. I just asked you to read it and consider it.
It's part of the record, sir.
And I, I thank you. I'd also like to, also want, remind the board that the applicant, six years ago, brought an article, 78 proceedings, against the board, okay? It was upheld at the lower court, and it was reaffirmed at the appellate division, okay? So there's sound grounds for what the board did, and I thank you for your time, and I respectfully request that the recommendation should be a denial. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the public who wish to be heard on this matter? Ma'am, please come up to the microphone, take your name and address.
Good evening, Chairman and the rest of the board. My name is Barbara Divana, 5 Berry Hill Drive in Fort Solange.
My name is Barbara Divana, Five Berry Hill Drive in Fort Solanga. My husband and I and our four children that we raised live adjacent to where the driveway would be cut through. I cannot really speak on the environmental issues or the steep slope as far as building the lot. I do know it was turned down in the past. What I'd like to speak about is the cut through on Berry Hill Drive to be a consideration. There's already a driveway that's been used by the applicant for his home, which is part of this subdivision for the past twenty-two years. And although he does have the right to build and benefit from the subdivision, as my family did twenty years ago, he would be, and I brought photos that I would like to submit. It's, it's not, the, the property of Berry Hill Drive, I don't know if any of you have been there, at the, the Board of Zoning Appeals, they did drive through. It would be clearing a lot of trees. May I get this?
Ma'am, if you have any photographs you wish may be made part of the record, please hand them to Mr. Colato. He'll hand them up to us, and they'll be made part of the record.
This is the same, but that's just one piece of all of them.
So, ma'am, these are the same photographs?
Yes, just one is all three together.
These three are one page?
Yes.
Okay.
Just like to state that there would be a lot of trees to substantially ruin the area. It would be disrupting what's currently there, aside from the fact that we, we have taken care of it. There's beautiful lawn that's there, there's trees that's there. I know that it's still town property, but to cut through when there's already something existing, I just would like to let the board realize it's not as simple. On the map, it looks like it's a road that goes through, but it really doesn't. Right now, it's maintained beautifully with trees and grass. And if there were no other options, then I would say, then maybe it's something to consider. But there is a roadway that the applicant's been using for twenty years, so it actually is in place for him, and if this is his subdivision, then why wouldn't he be able to use the current driveway in place? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other members of the public who wish to be heard on this matter at this time? Do either of the members of the planning department wish to comment on any of the comments that were made regarding their recommendation? Yes or no, at this time?
I mean, again, access is conducted at the subdivision aspect of an application before this board. The variances are pertaining to the steep slopes, not the access. So it's just something to consider, what the hearing is really for, or the recommendation is really for, not for the access, but more so the steep slope variances.
Okay. Well, we-
And just one more thing, the first time this came around, the subdivision was denied because of the access. I don't believe our department was opposed to subdivision, just the access coming from Berry Hill, and that was put on one of the reasons, and-
Yeah, it, in fact, it reads in a memo, excuse me, December sixth, two thousand seventeen. It says that the prior application was denied for the following reasons. A, there's a practical and feasible alternative design that would be less destructive of the environment. B, there's a practical and feasible alternative design that would permit the adjacent property tax number eleven dash seven dash one point three to also be subdivided. And C, the alternative design noted in points A and B is consistent with the design objectives of the subdivision regulations that recommend designs that minimize regrading, that are consistent with having a minimum impact on the environment, that, and that be useful for future development. It says, "If you are successful in obtaining the necessary variances from the Board of Zoning Appeals, the planning department plans to recommend that the access to the property come from the unnamed private road opposed to Berry Hill Drive."
I, apparently, there was a court decision of Justice Moliya back on July first, two thousand thirteen. A gentleman who spoke before mentioned that there was a court decision, and then it was affirmed or upheld on appeal. I don't know if anybody knows whether the appellate division wrote any decision, or they just affirmed it without opinion, but that's something that at some point we may find out. I just have a question, given the fact that we have different, obviously, we have some divergence in people's positions. Any member of the board wanna go look at this property before we, before we go and vote on it? I think that might be a good idea, that we all have a chance to go out there. So what we're going to do, we're gonna keep the public hearing open. We are going to adjourn the matter, or recess the matter, to the August fifteenth matter, fifteenth hearing, a meeting of the board, to give all of the board members an opportunity to go out and do what we call a site inspection, visit the site, look at it, so that when we do vote on it in August, or if it gets adjourned again, after that, we will have looked at it and can assess the various contentions of the parties against having seen the, the property ourselves. So that's, so that's what we're going to do.
Do I have an opportunity to respond?
You could do it, sure, you can respond if you wish to. But just so you know, it's not gonna be concluded tonight.
Understood.
We're all gonna go out and look at it, take our own view, and-
We appreciate that.
-draw our own conclusions, along with whatever's been given to us by anybody here.
So, you know, just in, in advance, just to address a, a couple of the comments, and then just speak a little bit more on the application. You know, basically, as far as the, the recommendations and everything else, all, a lot of those recommendations were always made upon this access off of Meadow Glen being completed by adjacent property owners. And that, that denial that we had, and the, the points that we had made at our last, you know, application, was that we felt that we were going to be held hostage by the adjacent property owners to develop this segment of, of driveway. And we were told by, you know, you know, members of planning staff not here today or since retired, that, you know, this was going to happen, you have an alternative, you can go out through Meadow Glen, there's a ten-foot driveway that is not safe, that's there now that my client's been using all of these years, and has had problems with maintenance on the driveway. It's not his property. He's not allowed to maintain it. He's allowed to traverse it. He lost, he almost lost his fingers trying to clear the property, and he's had a lot of problems with the adjacent property owner. He doesn't own it. So we were told that, listen, this is gonna happen, and so we're denying this to you because, you know, you can go, you know, and tack into this driveway, that's gonna happen. It, it's, it's now several years later, and it never happened. And my client would like to, to develop the driveway there. We met with the environmentalists, with the environmental department. Right now, they're kind of just reissuing their, their previous statements, but we'll present at the future hearing, less trees and less disruption occur with the plan that we have. And we've submitted in the past, we'll resubmit it to this board at the time. Of course, it's obvious, we're coming before you tonight not to review the full merits of the subdivision, although certainly that comes into play, but we're coming for you because the, the zoning board is considering the steep slopes.
We understand.
Excuse me?
We understand.
Yeah, so, you know, we, we, you know, we came and we're planning on more of a, more of a narrow presentation, but we understand that it's always open to, to public comment. One thing I, I did want to address that the, the, the second person had come up and mentioned is that we do not intend to have any through traffic through this. So the, the proposal is to remove any access that we have to Meadow Glen Road. It's not to allow any through traffic to come through Berry Hill, and we will submit a, a tree preservation plan that shows that we're, you know, taking down less trees. We appreciate this board going out to look at the property and to judge the merits of this application. And I, lastly, the point, I, I will certainly be able to respond to the letter in the future at the next hearing, but-
Yes, be made part of the record?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll-
You can go down to the planning department, they'll give you a copy, and-
But I, I think what you'll see is, in last, is that the requests that are being made here for the steep slopes are not uncommon and have been granted on many other applications. And I think if the, if the record holds, you'll see that it was, within the adjacent subdivision, they had many steep slopes that were in a part of theirs that were leveled off to create this vast subdivision that they're a part of. I don't know if it's twenty houses or whatever, or many are there, twenty lots, but you can go in there and see it as far as the record and how it's created. So, you know, that's, that'll conclude it. I understand it's open. I appreciate your time, and we'll see you at the, at the next, at the next-
You have to come up to the mic, please.
Sir, was there a hand in the back? Sir, you wanted to come up again? Please come up. You wanna hand up, anything you wanna hand up? You have the appellate division decision, is that what it is? Very good. Thank you very much. So as the gentleman has stated, apparently, there was litigation on this piece of property a few years ago. He mentioned that there was a, a decision by the Supreme Court out in Riverhead, and that that was appealed and affirmed on appeal, and I understand that you have the appellate division decision.
I have the appellate division decision.
So we'll take that as well. Everybody will have an opportunity to, to read it between now and August fifteenth. As you heard, we are not gonna decide this tonight. We all wanna go out and take a look at the property. I think that's what we should do in the, in a situation like this, so we can see for ourselves what's there, and be much more informed when we make our decision on the matter.
Can I just make a, a final comment?
Sure.
Because the gentleman mentioned my particular subdivision. In that letter is an analysis of the ten-lot subdivision, okay? Your variance is unprecedented.
We're talking seriously.
I'm sorry.
It's not a debate?
I apologize.
Please address the board.
That variance is unprecedented, okay? Because it, it's sixty-eight percent, none of those variances are sixty-eight percent. Plus, if you look at the lot area after granting the variance, the steep slope variance in question is thirteen thousand square feet, okay, a little over a quarter acre. The average lot area after the variance on that ten-lot subdivision, which is connected to Berry Hill Drive, is over forty thousand square feet. It's an acre. It is a substantial variance, and not in the character of the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Okay, so at this point, do we have a motion to recess and adjourn this matter to the August fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, a meeting of the board to give the board members an opportunity to do a site inspection before we vote on this application?
In the matter of Number Eleven Eighty-One, Map of Gemini Landing Two, a move that we recess and adjourn the public hearing to August, to the August fifteenth, two thousand eighteen meeting of the planning board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. So recessed and adjourned, should be noted that the, the public hearing is still open so that there can be additional comments from the public at the next hearing. I see the next matter on the agenda is the adoption of the minutes for June thirteenth, two thousand eighteen. So at this point, I move that we adopt the minutes of the June thirteenth, two thousand eighteen meeting of this board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Minutes are so adopted, does anybody wish to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. We're adjourned.